All right, well, welcome everybody as you're coming in and as you're getting admitted to our town hall meeting. We are so glad that you can join us tonight. My name is Charlene Margot and I am the proud founder of the Parent Education Series and co-founder of the new nonprofit, The Parent Venture. We are delighted that you are joining us tonight for the second in a series of town hall meetings hosted by Sequoia Healthcare District. Tonight, we are delighted to welcome the Board of Sequoia Healthcare District along with CEO Pamela Kurtzman. So again, as you're joining us, welcome, welcome. Thank you. My name is Charlene Margot. We actually were one of the early recipients of a grant from the healthcare district way back in 2011. So it's been almost a decade. Ours is a parent and community education program that started with 25 people in the library at Menlo Atherton. And today we've had more than 80,000 attendees and over 11,000 video views. And we owe a lot of that to the visionary leadership of Pamela Kurtzman. So Pamela, we could not be more grateful to you and the healthcare district. So again, thank you, all of you joining us tonight. You're in for a great treat to hear more about the healthcare district's response to COVID-19. So let us get started. Tonight, if you need Spanish interpretation, please run your finger along the bottom. You'll find the Zoom icons. There's a globe. And if you could click on Spanish, if you need Spanish, English, if you want to hear tonight's presentation in English. So again, if you need Spanish interpretation, our interpreter Cynthia Hinestrosa is with us to provide that. So click on the globe icon and then Spanish. Okay, so tonight's format is going to go like this. Pamela is going to open with an introduction, tell you a little bit about herself and the history of Sequoia Healthcare District. And then we're going to shift over to the board members. They're going to tell us a little bit about themselves, their own interest in community health and what brought them to the Board of Sequoia Healthcare District. After that, we're going to be focusing on some very important community issues, including food security, mental health, and health equity. And you'll be hearing again from the board on that. We've saved a lot of time at the end of this town hall meeting for questions from you, the audience. We hope that as we're going along tonight, please, you can talk to each other in the chat, but we'd like you to put your questions in the Q and A tab. So at the bottom of your screen, again, you will see Q and A and chat. Actually, you may not see Q and A in a meeting. I'm going to, I'm going to change course just a little bit. You can put comments to us and your questions in the chat box. Webinars are different. There is a Q and A tonight, questions in the chat box. So you'll be seeing some links there. You can talk to one another. You can send comments to us, the panelists. But we do hope that you'll have questions for us later in this presentation. All right, I think, oh, last comment is this video will be recorded and available on the Sequoia Healthcare District's website as well as our video library for the Parent Education Series. Again, so glad there are so many of you joining us tonight. Keep your questions. We have lots to talk about. And I'm now going to turn it over to Sequoia Healthcare District CEO Pamela Kurtzman. Take it away, Pamela.
Thank you, Charlene. So welcome, everyone. This is our board's first town hall. And I speak for all of us when I say that it's really great to have you all joining us tonight. We had the idea of a town hall really as a way to come together and to share information and hear from our community directly. Especially during these very challenging and uncertain times. It's important that we are physically distant from one another, but we don't want to socially disconnect. And so I'm going to just give you a quick overview about myself and try to keep this brief. I may end up talking too fast. You can always ask questions during the chat and after. So I can kind of call myself a date of I was born in Sonora, California. But then my family moved to Washington State when I was really pretty young. I lived there until, until college, went off to ASU and got a bachelor's degree in exercise physiology. Then I got married, moved to New York and got a master's in public health, came back to California where this is really my home. I've been here 20 years raising my kids here. I've been with Sequoia Healthcare District for 15 years. I started out developing and running one of the first programs of the district called Heart Safe, which is still a program of the district today. Then I transferred over to a school health program that initiated 10 years ago and have a transition that over to an excellent person we have on our staff. Dr. Karen Lee runs that now. And, and I've been CEO in this world for three years now. And it is a job I am so grateful to have and I love. So I'm going to kick off tonight's discussion with just by providing you some very high level background about the district and some of the work that we do. So to do that, I'm going to share my screen. And, and again, if I go quickly, just send some questions in the chat because I do want to give lots of time in the end here for questions. Can you all see this?
Yes.
Wonderful. Okay, a little slow at this. So all good organizational overviews start with, with providing their mission and their vision. And this is ours, to improve the health of our district residents by enhancing access to care and promoting wellness through the responsible stewardship of taxpayer dollars, something we take very seriously. Our vision is for all district residents to experience optimal physical and mental health at every stage of life. These are our core values. And the acronym for this is actually CARES. And that's really at the heart of what we do. This is who we are. We are a local government agency. We operate much like a water district or a school district or a fire district, but our charge is health. We were formed in 1946 to build and to operate Sequoia Hospital. And we were the first healthcare district in California. There are now 78 healthcare districts across the state. Some of them still own hospitals. We do not. We sold our hospital in 2006. And now the dollars, the revenue that we used, used to use to support the hospital is now to support the community, to keep people healthy and safe and, and hopefully out of the hospital. We are governed by the five-member Board of Directors that you'll have an opportunity to talk with tonight. Are each of our board members have, live in the district and live in a zone. There's five different zones and each board member is elected by the residents of that zone. We have four-year term limits, four-year term cycles, but that we have actually no term limits. My tiny and but mighty team have backgrounds in academia and in medicine and nonprofit administration. And our district is located in Redwood City. And who we serve. The district receives the bulk of its revenue, a portion of about 1.3% from the annual property taxes and commercial property taxes within its boundaries. The district covers central and southern San Mateo County, specifically the cities that you see listed here on the slide. We do not cover East Palo Alto or the coast. And we get questions about that a lot, but the lines, our boundaries were drawn in 1946 where people weren't even living at that time. So that's, it's a, the district also doesn't cover areas, some areas in East Menlo Park, but we do cover all the areas of Atherton, Portola Valley, Redwood City, San Carlos and Woodside. This is our annual income. We, our budget is around almost 18 million a year. The majority of our income comes from property taxes, about 84%. We have a pension pass through that's, is an income and an expense. It just comes in and out with an agreement with the hospital. And then we have a small amount of rental and investment income that comes in, but the majority of our, our income is property taxes. And we have a commitment to put 100% of those dollars back out into the community. And so the districts, the other thing is the district's annual budget or annual budget is approved by the board every year in June. And we, in setting that budget, we are really mindful of investing in the most impactful programs. I'm going to talk about here in just a second. These programs, we, these are our expenses. Majority of our expenses does go to programming. We primarily act as a funder, but we also run several of our own programs. Our investments cover a wide array of services and programs for all demographics within our district and at varying levels of prevention and, and clinical services. The expenses here, I don't know if you can see them very well on the chart, harder on the small screen, but they're broken into categories and we list them here from the, the highest cost programs to some of the lower cost ones. Our highest cost program is our Healthy Schools Initiative. It's about four and a half million dollars a year. That's about a third of our tax revenue. Then we have our COVID grant that we'll talk more about this evening, $3 million. We have a $3 million community grants program. Those are covering about 80 different nonprofit partners within five different areas. Food security, mental health, behavioral health, drug and alcohol, prevention and intervention, health literacy, fitness and safety, and clinical and medical services. And then our other category is the admin. It's about 1.1 million, but that includes some other programmatic costs. It includes our grants administration, payroll, web and IT and election fees and such. If you want any detailed information on any of this, it's all on our, on our website. And, or you can email me with any questions or ask any questions here in the chat. Our other major category here is our major funding initiatives. These are programs or services or agencies that we have significant investment in. Ravenswood, we have an investment of about a million dollars to Ravenswood every year supports services as oral health and medical services for our low-income community of about 6,000 that they serve each year. And then we have Samaritan House, about a million dollars we invest in Samaritan House each year. And that mainly covers the clinic in Redwood City for people who have no access to any other options for medical services. And so what do we know about our community? At all times and especially now, it's important that we know who we're serving. So what we're finding at this time especially is our communities of color, our low-income communities and other communities that have historically been marginalized are now struggling the most. Over 60% of our population is people of color. And 37% of some of our census tracts live in overcrowded housing conditions. Up to 39% of some of these census have, are limited English speakers. And our LGBTQT communities make up a high percentage of our homeless youth. And they experience discrimination and job discrimination at higher levels than other people in our community. And our immigrant families and households without documentation experience significant gaps in financial support. From our North Fair Oaks community, we have, they have identified, they have identified a significant number of needs. And these here are listed here now, we know as the district, we recognize that we can't realistically address every single one of these needs listed. But we can prioritize our investments to meet some of these most urgent needs and do so in the most impactful way. And these are the areas of health equity, food security and mental health. And we're going to discuss these in more detail tonight. And I encourage you to participate in the discussion, have dialogue with us, ask questions of our board and provide feedback all during this next part of this next meeting. And I love this quote. I heard it. I've been kind of thinking about it and using it sort of as my motto through all of this. In time, the virus will fade and the sci-fi moment we're living in today will be behind us. But the memory of the choices we made and how we showed up while it was here won't. So the district is showing up and we are listening and we are responding. And I want to conclude just by saying that myself and our staff and our board are listening and monitoring the impact that the crisis is having on our community. We're listening to our residents. We're listening to our friends and our loved ones. And we're looking to take actions that are going to help our community to recover and to rebuild and to heal. So that's really the purpose of tonight's town hall. I'd like to now turn it over to our elected Board of Directors. They will tell you a little bit about themselves. They're going to discuss in more detail our funding priorities that I listed there and address any questions that you have. Most importantly, they're here to listen and they're here to learn. So I'd like to start by introducing President Kim Griffin, who will tell us a bit about herself. And then we'll go down and I'll introduce each of the board directors.
I've been on the board since 2008. I work as a registered nurse in a medical office during the day. That's my day job. And my particular interests are healthcare advocacy and healthcare policy. I could talk about all the good things that we're doing on the board. And I think there are many. You just saw some of them, but I'm really interested in hearing what the community thinks. And in particular, I want to know what your healthcare challenges are and not only for yourself, but what you observe within your neighborhood and community.
Thank you, Kim. Dr. Sheffrin, our Board Vice President.
Good evening, everyone. Really appreciate you tuning in this evening and joining this dialogue with all of us. On a personal level, I'm a Midwesterner by birth and childhood and moved to California after my residency in obstetrics and gynecology from Georgetown University. I've been in California for well over 40 years and have had a number of administrative roles in medicine as well as the clinical practice of medicine. One of the reasons that being on the board personally appealed to me was an opportunity to kind of move my thinking upstream. As a physician and even as a hospital administrator, a lot of your time is spent dealing with problems after they've already developed and trying to help people through illness. But the activities that we're able to participate in through the Sequoia Healthcare District Board and the opportunities that we're willing to invest in gives us a way of breaking that chain and actually preventing disease, preventing hospitalization, preventing doctor visits and keeping people healthier. So that's what's been attractive to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sheffrin. Art Farro. Want to tell us about yourself?
Unmuted. Welcome to all of you. Very happy to see so many people involved and interested in what we're doing. My background is as a hospital executive. I was CEO of Sequoia Hospital and retired in 96 and subsequently came on the board. The, as a district board member, I've been on since 96. I was also on the hospital board for a number of years after I retired. I did some consulting and ran a hospital in Reno for a while, did some consulting for the San Mateo County Hospital as well. My background is East Coast. I went to University of Vermont. Graduate school was at George Washington University in DC. And my main motivation for sticking around as long as I have is that I think with all the money we get from the community, we're putting it all back into the community, keeping people healthy. And the whole idea of what we're doing, and I think more than anything else that we do is to try and keep people healthy and out of the hospital. If Sequoia Hospital left, I would only want it to leave because nobody needed hospitalization. But I don't see that's going to happen in my lifetime, but we're striving to do that. So again, happy to serve this community and welcome to all of you.
Thank you, Art. Dr. Nefak.
Thanks Pamela and thanks to all of you for joining us this evening. I'm Aaron Nefak. By, by my day job, as Kim described it, I was a, I work as a developmental behavioral pediatrician for the Paltz Medical Foundation. Most people have never heard of that. Basically, it's a pediatric specialty. I work with children with autism, learning disabilities, ADHD, mental health concerns, the like. So that's my day job. I also have a background in public health. I did graduate school in that before medical school. And public health, the public health lenses, the public health way of viewing the world is kind of how I've always carried through in my clinical practice and my advocacy outside of my clinical practice. And it's what drew me to the board. I'm one of the newer members. I've been on now for about two years, although in some ways it feels like 20, because it seems like a long time ago. And, but the public health motivation, the motivation to look at the health of our community more globally, to think through, you know, what we can be doing in our schools and outreach to some of our more marginalized communities. That's what, that's what drives me on the, I see a lot day to day in my clinical practice that can be kind of frustrating. And I know that what I do inside the walls of the clinic is sometimes, sometimes doesn't really have the effect I want because of what's going on outside the walls of the clinic. And so I was motivated to join the district board and run for this, to start working on those issues. And happy to talk further about that a little bit later. And in case we don't get to do it, just a shout out now for, to Pamela. And she said her small and mighty staff, I think they're all on, but to, who have been for the last, say, eight months really driving our COVID response. And the board has, you know, tried to give some direction here and there, but Pamela and Karen, Heidi and Jenny have really been carrying the water here and I'm really proud of the work they've done. And I just wanted to say that in the public sphere.
Thank you. Thank you. I think I have to agree with you with the team, boy. It's, it's a weird times, working from home and trying to adjust. But everybody's really stepping up because look at what we get to do. You know, we, we actually get to affect so many lives and who really need it right now. So we, that's why we want to hear from all of you and see how we can do even better. Thank you. We do have a incoming board member, Ivan Martinez. He is not officially our board member, but he has been officially elected. He will take his seat next month on the first Friday in December, but he is here tonight and is able to talk with you and to answer questions tonight. We want to welcome him. It's very exciting to have Ivan with us. Ivan, want to tell us about yourself, please?
Absolutely. Thank you. Again, Ivan Martinez. And I want to express my gratitude again for everyone being here, especially on a, for all the football fans. I know you guys decided to tune in instead of watch some Thursday night football. So thank you. I actually grew up in specifically the North Fair Oaks area in Redwood City, unincorporated Redwood City. And so very happy to be representing, as you saw, some of the numbers from, from our, you know, our Sequoia Healthcare District data. There's 60% of the population are, you know, people of color. So I'm glad to be on, on this board and serve with the rest of my colleagues. I definitely don't have, I'm very blessed to be around a lot of the doctors that have a lot of experience in the medical field. I think the only time that I spent in the, in the hospital was when I was getting injured playing sports. So I think the, the background that I definitely bring is nonprofit administration. I currently am Executive Director for the Redwood City Police Activities League. And on an everyday basis, I actually get to, you know, I'm in the field of youth development. And so it's, it's awesome to work hand in hand with the, with the families that, in the very same neighborhoods that, that I grew up in. And so I'm very fortunate to be able to do that. And also I think, yeah, I definitely felt a calling to be on this team. And so, you know, when I found out about this opportunity, I, I've known about the Sequoia Healthcare District and how much support has gone into the same community that helped raise me. And I was definitely, you know, someone who benefited from a lot of the after-school programs or the nonprofit organizations that have been supported throughout the years. And so I really wanted to make sure that I can go in there and bring that perspective and continue to support those organizations that are doing amazing work. And also, you know, maybe promote some, some more collaboration amongst some of the folks that we want to see talking some more across the communities. And so I'm definitely here and ready to serve. So thank you.
And yes, thanks Ivan. He is an absolute wonderful addition to our board. We have a great diverse board. As you can see, lots of experience and lots of compassion for the people that we are. Lots of expertise and I'm just so lucky to be able to work with, with such a great team. I think we're going to go into next to some discussion around these topic areas as we look to support our community during this time and potentially for the next couple of years, particularly around COVID. And so I think, Mark, Charlene, you're going to.
Yeah. Yeah. For those of you who may have joined us just a couple of minutes after the introduction, I want to remind everyone that the topic title for tonight is supporting a safe and healthy community during COVID-19. So we're going to be talking about the ways that the Sequoia Healthcare District supports that. And really the meat of our discussion today are these three topic areas. Health equity, food security and mental health. Our last town hall focused on the way that the healthcare district is supporting our schools. But tonight, we're going to be focusing on those three content areas. So Ivan, you spoke last, so we're going to ask if you would kick it off and tell us something about how the healthcare district is supporting health equity.
All right. Thank you. Well, in my, in my, you know, very several meetings that I've been a part of, I think I could speak more from experience from being on the, on the other side of the spectrum where seeing what Sequoia Healthcare has been doing for these past couple of months, definitely, you know, being a community member and a resident. I, every day I know that Pamela and the team are, have their ears tuned in to the ground and really listening to what the residents are going through, right? There's a lot going on right now that, especially given with COVID. Obviously, we, so many avenues to talk about there. But even from my, my one-on-one discussions with the Sequoia Healthcare Team and with Pamela, you know, we're, we're, we're looking deeper than just what's happening on surface level. Like we know that people are losing jobs. We know that, we know that there's disparities around food everywhere, right? People need access to food and there's so many challenges. But we're really trying to go one level deeper and say, hey, where, where are the missing voices? Where are we not looking and what else should we be doing, right? I know I had one very sincere conversation just recently with Pamela. And I can, I don't have a problem sharing this story. Just recently, my, my family had a huge scare because, you know, my mother, it was only pneumonia, right? But it was associated with, with COVID-19. And so some of the very difficult things right now that, that are hugely impacting at least the community that I know that I'm from is just the isolation piece, right? Family is everything. Family is everything. So how do we tell people, hey, let's, let's isolate ourselves, right? Or you have to be away. And we know that it's for the safety and for, for everyone else, but it's really challenging to do that. And sometimes I think we need more, we need to be able to provide more guidance and more mentoring and telling these families and telling the grandkids, hey, you need to stay away from grandma for two weeks or we may not be able to see her so long, right? And so I really appreciate the Sequoia Healthcare Team because it's, it's not just pumping out the information that we're, we're kind of, you know, getting from, from all over the place, from media and everywhere. But it's really listening to those individual stories and those individual needs and being in tune with the executive directors, with other community leaders, with city officials, with the residents, so that we can really get creative with our ideas and our messaging and be more impactful on an everyday, our everyday decisions as board members.
Well, thank you Ivan. I can tell that you're going to be a. Well, thank you, Ivan. I can tell that you're going to be a great board member. And I can see why you said what you said, Pamela. Those personal stories really make a difference. And it allows the rest of us to connect with the experience of people who need the support of the healthcare district. Are there any other board members who would like to add to Ivan's comments about health equity? No? Okay. If not, yes. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Aaron.
Yeah, no, I just think that as we're talking about the COVID lens, I think that it's, I think most people know, but it's good to say out in public that the spotlight that COVID has shown in terms of health equity is and health inequity is really also being brought forth through the Black Lives Matter movement and the protests over the summer. We see the desperate impact, right? And we have to, we have to say that out loud, like the desperate, the desperate impact is on our communities of color. It's on a more marginalized community. And that's something that I think is important that the district, the healthcare district, everyone knows that the district is very much aware of that. We see that. We know that those, those impacts are real and that there is a serious, long history of, you know, just systematic racism that's led to this. We don't have answers. But I think I just want everyone to know that we, you know, you can't ignore that fact. COVID has shown us really bright light on it in our communities and communities across the country.
Thank you. Really well said. Really well said. Very important perspective. All right. Next area that we're going to tackle is food security. And Jerry Sheffron, Dr. Sheffron, I know this is a topic that is near and dear to your heart. Why don't you kick us off to talk about food security?
Oh, thank you. If I could just add to the last conversation for a second, you know, I think that having been on the board like Art for many, many years, whether it was conscious or unconscious, we have actually acted as a board in many ways with a health equity point of view. And if everyone were to look at the distribution of our funds, I think you'd see a very significant proportion going to people of color, which is of course partly related to socioeconomic issues. But at the same time, it is something that is kind of in our DNA and that we've been doing for a long time. Food insecurity. So I think it's worth starting by talking or making the statement that San Mateo is one of the wealthiest counties in the United States and by virtue of that in the world. I think we rank as the seventh wealthiest county in America. So in a sense, we have the resources to tackle food insecurity, especially compared to many other counties and communities in the United States. And Sequoia Healthcare District is one of the many vehicles that are being used to fund and try and tackle this problem. We, we identified that food insecurity would be a much greater problem during the COVID crisis. I think we've all noticed that with the shutdowns, the unemployment, the large number of district residents who really don't have emergency funds to carry them through, that we could see that the demand was going to increase swiftly and in fact exponentially. And we've all seen news reports showing these long lines of cars waiting to pick up food various distribution centers. So it was obvious to us early on that this was an area that we needed to focus. We committed $3 million to COVID funding in a number of different areas. And in respect to the great number of needs for solving food insecurity, about a third of our first round funding went to various sources to fund food insecurity. And in fact, in our second round of funding, we've already committed another $250,000 to pay for additional resources to deal with the hunger in the community. One of the areas of really great concern is that childhood hungry, hunger has a lifelong effect on that child. It affects their welfare and their future in almost every way. Food insecurity in San Mateo County and children is estimated to be at about 16%. And there's an estimated $43 million shortfall in providing food security for adults and children in San Mateo County. Yet again, one of the wealthiest counties in our country. Our CEO Pamela recognized very early on that many of the organizations that were working to help solve food insecurity problems were themselves facing insecurity because their resources had begun to dry up. Fundraising during these last three to four to five months has been significantly reduced in almost every community. And many of our organizations that we rely on to help our citizens related to food insecurity needed additional resources themselves to just stay functional. So as part of our emergency funding, we have allowed significant extra flexibility with the funds that we provide so that these organizations not only supply food for people who need it, but also for their organizational structure and security. So they'll be there now and in the future for our community. As always, we have partnered with other organizations because when you partner, you generally can maximize the effect of what you do. And in fact, one of our larger grants recently was a grant that we made in conjunction with Sequoia Hospital that provided significant extra funding to Second Harvest Food Bank. For those who aren't real familiar with the district, we don't distribute food. We basically fund organizations, key organizations that are on the ground and actually do the work for us. Organizations like Samaritan House, Peninsula Volunteers, which has the Meals on Wheels program, Second Harvest Food Bank, probably known to everybody on this webinar, St. Vincent's DePaul Jewish Family Services and Jewish Family Services and Children's Services. COVID-19 has created additional costs in especially providing food for these organizations. They are finding that the costs are higher than they were before. And we've been working to help them with that and identify and solve those problems. So the district has been very proactive in this crisis in looking at what works and ensuring that your tax dollars are spent wisely in trying to help resolve this problem. We're only one cog in the wheel, but we think we're an important one. And because we can be nimble and flexible, we can bring resources more quickly, often than other organizations that are able to do. So thank you all again for listening. We'll be interested to hear any questions that any of you have.
Well, thank you so much, Jerry. Any of you board members, would you like to add to Dr. Sheffron's excellent comments on food insecurity?
I just would like to remark that at the beginning of the pandemic, food costs started to rise. And in fact, they've gone up 20% during the pandemic. And so you can imagine for some of these poor families that were struggling prior to the pandemic, you know, to suddenly have an increase of 20% on their food bill and then lose jobs on top of it. I think it really left people in a precarious position.
Thank you, Kim. And I think that, again, Jerry's comment about nimbleness and flexibility really defines the work that this Sequoia Healthcare District does. And you're hearing that over and over tonight as a theme. So the third main topic area that we're going to be talking about tonight in supporting a safe and healthy community is mental health. And I think that you'd kind of have to be under a rock to not know the impact that COVID-19 has had on the community, mental health, children, adults, seniors, everybody. So we're going to hear a little bit more about that from Aaron. So Aaron, please take it away.
Sure. Thanks, Charlene. And yeah, I think that you kind of hit it on the head there, right? I think that saying that mental health is a priority and a challenge during COVID times is about the greatest underestimate I think I could possibly say this evening. All of us have been experiencing it, right? It doesn't matter who you are, what walk of life. From the time, my kids will tell you, they remember March 13th was a Friday. That was the last time they went to school. Like from that day forward, everyone's had quite a roller coaster of emotions. And some of us have weathered it better than others. But everyone's probably gone through times of anxiety and depression and worn out. And I think that it's something that we all just have, we have to acknowledge in ourselves. We have to acknowledge in our families. We have to acknowledge in those around us. And we also have to acknowledge that it's, it's not going away. And it may not go away even when COVID, God willing, does. Some of these effects may linger. We really don't know what the effect of living through a failed response to a global pandemic really does to somebody. And so this is something that I think we're going to have to have our eyes on for a long time to come. And it's something that the district has been doing. This is, this has been a priority of ours well before the pandemic struck. But it's been something that I think because as other speakers have mentioned, we're nimble or flexible. It was obvious early on, I think, within a couple of weeks that this wasn't gonna, this was gonna last and this was gonna have effects. And I think, you know, we as a district have tried through our initial funding and through some of the flexibility of some funding that we've had in the past to really respond to that to this point, and we'll be continuing to do so. As, as Dr. Sheffron mentioned, we don't provide mental health services, but we help to fund people who do. And a lot of what we've done is increased some of the funding to our nonprofit partners that provide mental health services on the ground, dealing with anxiety, dealing with depression, behavioral health challenges. We've also been focused on isolation. And I think a couple of speakers have brought that up already tonight. That isolation is, is a key issue that really reflects our mental health. We all miss our families. We're all struggling with what to do with Thanksgiving and other holidays. And it's magnified during this time. And that's something that we've really been focused on, in particular with our older adults. We've support violence prevention efforts. We've helped to fund people to are rolling out telehealth in their practices to try to reach more folks. And, you know, we also have our Healthy Schools Initiative. That's the biggest single chunk in the pie chart that Pamela showed at the beginning. And we've managed to continue to fund our wellness coordinators all through, even when schools have been shut down and continuing. And that's an effort that will be continuing long through once the pandemic is done. So I'm sure if people have other specific ideas, if people have other specific areas, we would love to hear from you, either in this venue or others. It's an area that we've been focused on before the pandemic, during the pandemic, and will continue to focus on moving forward.
Thank you, Aaron. So board members, is, would anyone like to add anything to this discussion on the Sequoia Healthcare District's response to mental health needs in the community? I will say it has been a big focus of parent and community education. Again, a program that's funded through the Healthy Schools Initiative that Pamela created and brought to the healthcare district. So we know that we're seeing a lot of it. And they, again, partner with so many organizations like One Life Counseling Center that are bringing direct services to the community. So thank you. Thank you. All right. This is the part of the evening where you, our attendees, our town hall community, get to ask questions. So we have some questions that have come in previously from the community, but we hope that you will join us. So again, if you have questions, please type them into the chat. Keep them kind of short, if you would, because we'd like to get to as many as possible tonight. And again, if possible, somewhat general, so that we can address as many of the community needs as we can. Here's the first question I think might be for you, Pamela. First of all, this viewer says, thank you so much for tonight's meeting. In the beginning of your presentation, you talked about a couple of areas that the Sequoia Healthcare District does not serve in East Palo Alto and on the coast. Would the district ever consider expanding its boundaries to include these communities? And if so, what would be the steps required to make that happen? And how long would it take?
Good questions. So the, so what would have, so as we're funded through property tax dollars, that's 1.3% of the county's dollars. Somebody in one of those other jurisdictions, one of those other areas would have to give up a tax base to enable to support the district. And that's been really complicated. We have tried to look at annexing East Palo Alto and the coast into the district before. We do, there's, it's a really difficult thing to do. And some of my board members can expand on this. But we have tried to do that because we know that these communities could benefit. But we, 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 by law, cannot provide services outside of the tax base. And we haven't had a city say, well, we're going to step up and help provide those, those dollars. So that would be mean that those, those cities and those residents in those cities could experience a tax increase for that to happen. There's a big, long process, and I don't have all the steps in front of me. Can certainly get you all that. But it would take a while, and it has been a while since it's been in discussion. And for the board members who have been on the board a couple, few, couple of decades, Dr. Sheffron and Art could add to this. But it is.
Well, I'll comment on that. We've looked at that over the years. And for the most part, we found that the communities where we were interested in expanding and providing service, we're not interested in paying more property taxes. And the need in those communities, although there certainly is a need, it's really beyond our jurisdiction. And the advice we've had over the years, and we're talking about a lot of years, those communities were not, the people who were not interested in subsidizing any more tax money.
And I will add that there are still ways that the healthcare district touches and serves those communities. For example, in my program, the Parent Education Series, we serve Menlo Atherton High School. And as many of you know, that high school now does educate all of the kids from East Palo Alto. So there's ways that they do touch those communities. I just wanted to clarify that point. Yeah, Jerry.
I had a comment. I think, although I don't, can't offer a solution to the question that was asked, I think it points out the uniqueness of having a healthcare district here. And the benefit through wisdom or circum, you know, happenstance that the taxpayers agreed through legislative changes and so on to provide this tax money as a way of benefiting the health of their community. So when you look at it, this county, which has a healthcare district northern part and a healthcare district in the southern part, is somewhat unique in being able to provide a range of services that are just absolutely not available in other communities. Now, that's a sense of pride in one way, and of course, and the in others. And we have not found a mechanism for being able to expand appropriately into other communities.
Are healthcare districts unique to this area? Or are they throughout California?
Throughout California. As Pamela pointed out, there are 78 different healthcare districts. But not all areas of California are included in a healthcare district.
Okay. This is, is El Camino Healthcare District or Hospital District. No, it's Healthcare District. They operate, still operate a hospital down in Mountain View area, Washington Hospital across the bay in Fremont. There, as the indicated, more and more of the hospitals are converting to community services such as we have. But for the most part, a lot of rural hospitals throughout California are district hospitals.
Art, could you expand on that? Does the district still run Sequoia Hospital? And if not, why not?
No, we, back in, in 1996, Sequoia Hospital was going through financial problems. Competition was high, cost, cost of living was high. And we, along with the then board, and I see Brent Bichtke, who was on the board at the time, is amongst us. We decided that in the best interest of the community, rather than have Sequoia Hospital go broke or worse, we would affiliate. So at that time, we affiliated with what was then Catholic Healthcare West, currently called Dignity Health. And then pretty soon, it's going to be another name. And that way, we were, the hospital was able to take advantage of being part of a large group, which meant purchasing supplies and staffing and the like. There were economies of scale. So the hospital was able to pull itself out of So the hospital was able to pull itself out of a difficult situation and continue running. So many hospitals, what were formerly hospital districts have done the same thing we have. And they're able to take their community money and put it into the benefit of the welfare of the community rather than running a hospital. So when I started at Sequoia Hospital and was CEO, we had 592 beds. And we had at times a waitlist to get in. Now we're lucky to see 100 patients a day and sometimes more, sometimes less. Medicine has changed dramatically. In the past, you'd find people during this time of year, a lot of upper respiratory disease was treated in the hospital. Now they're treated at home. Bypass surgeries, there's so many medical interventions now that those are dropping. So the whole method of, of healthcare has changed. And I think we're at the forefront by being able to keep people, as I said earlier, out of the hospital rather than in the hospital.
Thank you for that.
Could I add something there?
Of course.
I go back a long ways. My dad was on the founders committee for Sequoia Hospital in 1950. Which was amazing to me and I've really been proud of him for that. Then I was on the board and I tried to keep Mr. Farrell straight for a number of years. It was very difficult chasing him around the hospital, but we succeeded in doing that. And then came that memorable afternoon. When I was chairman of the board. And we had this meeting of the board to vote. Of whether we were going to take our local hospital and sell it to Catholic Healthcare West. And the meeting was jam full of people. And Art, you can remember that day. I thought it was a memorable day. And we, by a vote of four to one, we voted to go with Catholic Healthcare West. Never in my own mind did I think we would get to a position where you people are today. When you take in what 15 million a year or whatever that number is. And what's, what we knew that, you know, you were taking the money and we didn't, we had no idea where it was gonna go. And we thought it was gonna go to help support the hospital. It's interesting hearing everybody talk about these wonderful things you are doing. I think I heard Sequoia Hospital mentioned once. And I know that you're, you know, it all, it all overlaps, but. I didn't know what you were doing when I was invited to come to this meeting tonight and I'm really happy to be able to do it. And I submitted one thing to, that I thought would be really great for you people to do. And to take some of that money and go to the garage area on Whipple Avenue, which isn't even used anymore. And build a facility for the nurses to live in. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that. Thank you very much. I had two hip replacements at Sequoia Hospital last year. I'm just coming up on my one year anniversary and. I know what a wonderful organization that is. I know Marie Violet is online with us tonight. So thank you for that partnership. I'm gonna shift gears a little bit. Kim, are you ready for a question?
I'm ready.
All right. Considering the current needs of your family, what do you think is the greatest barrier to maintaining good health during COVID-19?
Now, are you directing this question to me or the audience?
To you. Just based on your expertise, Kim, what do you, and your family, what do you think are the greatest barriers to maintaining good health for families right now?
Well, the isolation and that's related to COVID and just in terms of trying to avoid exposure. I have an 88-year-old mother that lives with me. So we have to really weigh carefully whether we're going to the, to the doctor or not. So on a personal level, I really have not avoided doctor's appointments myself. And of course I work in a medical office and mostly with children. But I see, I see more of the challenges related to, to people in my neighborhood and particularly elderly people. So access to care for even for people that have insurance, it's, it's a challenge right now.
Thank you, Kim. Really well said. You know, here's a connected question, Ivan, I think that you could comment on. What do you think are the greatest challenges for our low income and mentally, excuse me, medically fragile community members? In North Fair Oaks to remain safe during COVID? What are the greatest challenges for our low income and medically fragile community members?
Where do I begin? I think one of the toughest things that I'm seeing right now is the two generation, three generational homes. Where you have, you know, grandparents and parents and kids, we have aunts and uncles. And how, how, how do you, how do you keep, you know, six feet distant, there's not even, you know, three feet distant between you and the next person that you're sleeping in the same bedroom with. And so it's, it's super challenging, right? And especially when we are telling our families to stay home. Yeah, well, we're telling them to isolate and stay home and guess what? That's a house filled with, with individuals who are struggling with housing right now, who wish they had their own space or wished they could afford it, right? And so I think the, that is a huge challenge right now. And I also think that. There is a, you know, the, the, I've seen many folks in the younger generation or just the, you know, some adolescent age. That are still not taking things too seriously, to be honest with you. And I, I personally want to get creative in the ways that we communicate messaging around the importance of the subject. And really tapping into ways that we can connect back with them and, and show them the severity of this. Because people aren't really paying attention until it finally hits their home, right? To, to be quite frank with, with it. And so. I definitely, you know, if it's the social media platforms and it's the influencers that we have to go find and seek to give these messages to them, then, then that's what it has to be. But yeah, there's, there's, there's so much. I, I didn't even talk about, you know, job and securities. We all know how tough it, it's, it's, I mean, I, I have, me personally, I have so many family members who are, you know. Right now are just jobless. And so. Yeah, it, it, the, the list can go on, but I think. You know, and I've said this before, I think at a, at another session with our Sequoia Healthcare District Board and I said. You know, mental health and the biggest needs, they don't go too far from our housing needs in North Fair Oaks.
Thank you, Ivan. Really great insights. And connected to that, Erin, here's a question for you. We brought up mental health and I know you touched on this. What are you seeing in your clinical practice that's helping you to prioritize your work through Sequoia Healthcare District?
Sure. I touched on it a little bit before, but. My healthcare practice as a developmental pediatrician, I work with children who already had the pre-existing behavioral learning, mental health concerns. And it comes, I don't think it's any surprise to anybody, but things have been really rough in my practice for the last eight months. If you came into a pandemic and a school closure with struggles already, for the most part, they've really been magnified. And at that same time where community resources have been pulled away. So a lot of people would get therapy at school when that stopped. A lot of people had in-person therapy and now it's switched to telehealth therapy. And for some people it might work, but for a lot of folks, speech therapy or behavioral therapy through a mechanism like this just doesn't cut it. And I spend a lot of my days right now telling people, I'm sorry, I don't really have a good answer for you. You know, I really just kind of speaking as a father versus, versus a physician, because there aren't any good answers right now. So it's a tough time and I think that. It's just kind of, that helps me in my work on the district here to really just stay honed in on that, to kind of think through. Okay, what, what happened during my day today? And then how does that reflect when I come to a meeting here or discussion with Pamela or one of the other board members? Remember those stories and to make sure that we're advocating for those folks. I will say that for my kids who had social anxiety, this is great. They're doing fine. But just about everyone else in my clinical practice is really struggling right now. And, and I see it day to day and try to, try to bring that perspective to our board.
Wow. So true, Erin. I had listened in on the board meeting at Sequoia Health, Sequoia Union High School District last night and. Parents were respectful, but they're so frustrated. It's just so hard. And the best we can say is. You know, we empathize with you, tough times. Yeah, we want our kids back in school, but we want to be safe. And so, like you say, it's just really hard. Okay, here, this is sort of a change of pace question. This one might be for you, Pamela. Let's see. Has Sequoia Healthcare District ever, or would it consider organizing or participating in a community convening of nonprofits? And the county share experiences and less, to share experiences and lessons learned in the area of mental health during COVID-19? Would you consider organizing or participating, participating in a community convening of nonprofits?
Absolutely. So there's a, one of the big focuses of, of the day for me and is it really has been previous to COVID. But more than ever is that we've got to come together with our other agencies. We've got to form alliances. Really keeping our eye on that, alliances that are like-minded, that are, that are doing great work that we can align with, that we can collaborate with. We don't want to work in silos. There's a lot of really good work going on. And then we also need to work with other funders. And so one of the things that we are doing now. We work with the funders convening that's focused on adolescent mental health. We haven't met for a while given COVID, but we're just getting back on. Dr. Lee, my staff Karen is really involved in this work as well. She's on several mental health committees because of the work she's doing in the schools. But it's absolutely imperative that funders work together, that big organizations work together, love working with our county. They've got a lot of great work going on that we can align with. Because when we do that, the impact could be greater. We leverage our dollars. We can really address some of these issues. We're doing a lot of good work and you can hear that tonight, that there's so much more to do. There's so much more we, we can learn from all of the people on the call today. And when we get together and have convenings, something I'm going to start doing next year, starting in January. Our convenings with other nonprofit directors and some of their development directors. In a Zoom-like, because it's gonna have to be in Zoom. But to come together, half a dozen or so, to talk about some of the big issues that they're facing as they think about the long term. Because this is gonna be with us for a long term. We have an urgent reaction we can do now, an urgent response. But we have to start thinking about the long-term stuff. And so we're going to start that dialogue and then pull the people together and they can converse as well. It's a very unique county and it's very collaborative, but there's still a lot to do. And so did that answer the question, I hope? Excited about this stuff.
Ivan, you mentioned that, I'm sorry, is somebody else talking? Ivan, you mentioned the devastating impact of unemployment on our community, especially in the Fair Oaks area. Does the Sequoia Healthcare District, and this may be something you're not quite in with, but. Does the district support job training in key areas like health and safety? Is that another Pamela question or somebody else?
Yeah. Yeah, that's definitely a Pamela question.
So one of the, one of the approaches I've been working with the board. Is that we, we traditionally funded big programs and big issues that are very, very specifically health, right? And during the pandemic, we've really seen that there are other areas. That aren't necessarily things that the district is funding. They're not, you can't say is a health issue specifically like cancer or a mental health issue. But is an issue because it's one of those social determinants of health. That, you know, that is impacting folks. And one of those job loss and job training is another area. Where if people have lost their job, there's no way they're going to get back to that. It might be something that we could look at partnering with agencies that support job training around. Healthcare workers. And that might be something and we're looking at. We have a lot more discussion to see what that would look like, but that those, those workers would need to stay in our community and give back and help support that community. But it's something to explore. We haven't gotten there quite yet, but it's one of those areas that we're, we're kind of looking at. And your, Dr. Shepherd wants to add to that.
I think that question brings up. An interesting point that I struggle with all the time. In fact, I'd love to hear from the community about it. You know, we get around $15 million in, in tax receipts each year. Which is not a drop in the bucket, but close to it in terms of trying to solve all of the. Direct healthcare problems in our community. So when we start to get off into areas that are less directly related to health. It means that we have to take some of those dollars away from the areas that are directed more towards. Direct health issues. And trying to find that balance is really a struggle. Because we know that virtually everything affects health at some point in someone's life. Or it's some point in what they are doing. So Pamela and I talk about this very frequently about should we invest in this? But if we invest in this, we're taking money away from that. And how is the best fit for the community? I'd love to hear if anyone else has a solution to that.
I just, the other thing I would add to is that the, the reason that this would even be a consideration is that there's a significant shortage of certain healthcare workers. And having more healthcare workers specifically like in oral health, dental hygienists. Health aides, home healthcare workers, there's a significant shortage. And if we could help support our residents, our community by providing more of that, that might be something to consider. But to Dr. Shepherd's point, and this, it's a really tough thing to balance and it really does need to make, make sense. And so, yeah, I'd love to hear what other people think. As a matter of fact, in all of these questions that are, that are asked. We'd love to have more dialogue with the community and have people be able to answer these as well. And if not today, we can have another, another town hall for more dialogue.
And we will. So we have an attendee who had his arm up. Do you still have a question?
Yeah, good, good evening. My name is Rafael Lamentaño. And I was a former board member for the Sequoia Healthcare District. It's a pleasure to see you all, board members. And thank you for all your work, Pamela to your team, for all the work that you do and for being innovative as a district. I just want to let you all know that now being an executive director for Redwood City 2020. I would love to support the district in convening nonprofits and continuing discussions around priorities. That you lay out with your strategic plan. I know that's something you're working on. And as core members of Redwood City 2020, which will be changing our name soon. I would love to continue to have that conversation and just know that I'm here to serve, to really push forward the people's agenda. And once again, thank you for your time and for your efforts. Look forward to working alongside of all of you.
I'll be tapping into you, Rafael. Don't you, don't you, don't you worry about that. Thank you, Rafael, for your patience. Here's another comment from another partner. Sequoia Healthcare District has been supportive of our life moves work with the district's residents experiencing homelessness. Working with the elderly, homeless children and other vulnerable homeless populations has been. Especially challenging during the pandemic. We are so grateful for your support. So thank you Pamela and the Sequoia Healthcare District and the board.
One small comment, I just wanted to add, going back to the discussion about the shortage of healthcare workers. And Pamela, I know that, I mean, there's something, things that we have to weigh out. But more conversations with even our, our local community colleges, because I know that they have great programs and maybe providing scholarships for people to go into these programs. So that's something, an area that I think is worth exploring.
Thank you, Ivan. And the district does have a history of supporting a nursing program to get more nurses back into the community when there was a shortage. And so it's not that we've never done that. We just, again, it has to make sense and learn from what we've learned from the experiences of the past. And yeah, so thank you.
Pamela and board members, here's a question from an attendee asking. Will the district consider supporting such needs as childcare and housing? And how are you helping nonprofits manage the devastating financial impact to their operations? I know that's a biggie.
I can, I can take that first. Are we, are we funding housing or childcare? So as I, as I mentioned earlier, that one of the things we're exploring with the board is. Funding of things that we haven't traditionally funded, but would be kind of. funding of things that we haven't traditionally funded, but would be kind of game changers for our residents to get back on their feet. Um we are in discussion. We are in discussion. We recognize that the social determinants of health, like childcare and housing, very much related to one's health and well-being, their mental health, all of it. People who don't have secure housing and safe housing, you know, that's, that's, that's crisis. And so keeping them from having to go into the shelters and becoming homeless is is not something that we've um that is more of what we've been focused on is keeping them healthy and keeping them housed and such. By doing that, by supporting our big nonprofits, they may fund um some rental assistance or utility support and such. But it hasn't been our main, our main thing. Would we now? We're going to look, does that make sense now? Because we want to build a system to support our residents coming, I mean, and going through this now. But in the long term as well. And if that needs to be part of a system to help them recover and our community recover, we're going to discuss that and we're going to consider it.
Okay, and while um while we're talking about systemic change, here's a comment that came in from Joanne, just kind of something to think about again, sort of in your process. Now, there's one more person to admit. Certainly, the broad systemic problems underlying the intensification of food security and mental health challenges in this time of COVID-19 are far beyond the district's ability to address. However, do you see ways that district can play a role in elevating public discussion around that, those issues and encouraging greater local multi-governmental agency? Sort of again, more about the collaborating with other nonprofits in the community. You've touched on that, Pamela. Anybody else too? So it's a good question.
It's a great question. Um and it's a question that um we've had within the board. You remember that Director Griffin said that she's into health policy, health advocacy. And as as am I, in the past, we've had conversations about, well, what can we be doing? We're, we're small board here, but we're nimble and we're, and we have a very specific viewpoint to bring forward. And we've talked about where should we be at more city council meetings and should we have a good relationship with the board of supervisors? Should we be there more, more vocal in advocacy role or more in a convening role? Um we don't know the answer to that question. Um but I think it's a really important one, and I think a lot of us would feel that. You know, we, we, we want to be involved in that conversation moving forward. Um whether we lead it or we're a part of it, uh we're not sure, but I think um it's definitely a priority that a lot of us share.
Well, this this forum itself, to me, is an approach to do just that. Uh I know that we invited many of the city and county leaders. I don't see many of them on this panel. So I think they've got to express an interest. We can initiate, but if they don't follow through, it's very difficult. I'm disappointed that I don't see anybody from the board of supervisors or any of the city councils, unless I'm missing something.
You know, we do have someone from board of supervise, well, we have, um, we do have Marcy Drygoon, who is Warren Slocum's.
I'm talking about the, the board of supervisors, not their representatives. Key people, we are a board, we're here, the board supervisors are board, they're not here. We could easily have representatives representing us as well. We're not doing that.
And at the same time, um we want to make sure that we're present at their board meetings and engaging with them. And take that approach and that active uh participation in theirs. And I've been working to do that. I think one of the things too that um that this COVID, this experience and all that we're going through is that the need for more communication, the more, as I mentioned earlier, reaching out to our big partners. Um I work with our county health. Um I know that we've had, we had Srija on the line here earlier, um Louise Rogers, um Scott Morrow. Uh we do work with a lot of our big, our big public health um leaders so that we can let them know we're here for them. And um they're here for us and we're all collectively here for our community that we share. And so it's something I'm really striving to do. Um this is, this is an attempt. We have a new newsletter out. We really are trying to communicate. Because I think that with so much going on and uncertainty and confusion, we could at least bring some some convening and some clarity to some of this and show that we're, we're community and we're all working together. I love that question, Joanne. Thank you.
I, I'd like to say that, you know, I've long thought that we should be a lot more vocal, not only on a county level, but look, even a state and a federal level, right? Because, you know, look at the impact that this lack of PPE had on us as a health, just a healthcare district. When we were scrambling trying to get uh N95s just for our nursing homes. You know, when all of those things should have been in place, right? And you know, so there's really been a le, a gross lack of a preparedness for this pandemic. Um and in getting back to Chris Rivers' question, you know, and uh he talks about shared experiences and lessons learned. Well, listen, we're writing the playbook right now. You know, and there's a lot of lessons to be learned, and it's not just in mental health. It's everything. It's education, it's housing, it's healthcare, everything that has impacted our healthcare district. Well, and I think that this, the, the, I think one of the main goals of these town halls is to try to start that conversation, right? Elevate your work, what it is that you're doing. What is the healthcare district? In my work, again, in parent and community education, I know the great impact that you're having. But not everybody knows about healthcare districts or who the Sequoia Healthcare District is or who the Peninsula Healthcare District is. So I think this is a great first step and we are, we are really grateful, I'm talking about as a community member now, to be here tonight. My father was one of the founders of the Second Harvest Food Bank. Why? He worked for Container Corporation. He knew how food flowed. And so when he retired, he would go at night and he would literally pick up food and he would take it to the food bank from Safeway. So I know that this matters and I really am grateful to you all. So here's a timely question for anybody. How does the district's philosophy, core values and policies address racial disparities? Anybody? Well, we've always been very diverse in terms of uh of distributing our funds. You know, our fun, like, and I think Jerry said this pretty well too, that, you know, we've always funded um a lot of uh of challenged communities within the district uh that represent a lot of the, most of the ethnic groups.
I would uh just say that um that's something that I don't know that has always been explicit. It's been implicit. I think Dr. Shepherd made a really great response to that. And uh it kind of described how, you know, that's been an implicit part of the work that we've done. And if you look at where the money has flown to and from, uh it it seems that way. But whether or not we've actually said, and I've had, we've had conversations about this, where I've said, I've asked and brought up, or we've all brought up. Okay, so should we consider anti-racism as a public health policy? If so, what does that mean? I say, yes, we should, but I don't know what that means for our district, right? And I don't know necessarily that it's, you know, a white male. I'm actually the one who should answer that question, but I'm happy to pose it and hear other people's responses. Um but I think that's something that we're all kind of wrestling with. Uh that has been, the implicit has now become a little more explicit, thanks to 2020 in a lot of different ways. Um and I feel like we've done good work implicitly. And sometimes we may be moving forward and may need to make that more of an explicit goal. Um but I don't know the answer to that. I don't know how that will look. It's something that as a board will probably work through together. And hopefully as a community, if there are other folks who have input on that question, we would love to hear it.
Aaron, I, I, I think you have some very good points. I would point out though, since the beginning, back in nineteen ninety-seven, when we started as an independent. Uh we've never even addressed the issue. We just give what, where it's needed. Uh it doesn't matter to us what color they are or what religion they are or what sex they are or whatever. Uh our first goal is to take care of people regardless of who they are or what they look like. Now, to express it in some way, I have mixed feelings about that because I like what we've been doing. We've been providing the care that's needed to whatever community needs it. Uh something we can discuss as a board, but I, I think we've been doing a very good job along those lines.
I could add a comment. I think you will see when we complete our strategic plan that there'll be built into that more of an equity lens than has been potentially obvious in the past. And um although I, I'm very proud of the work we've done. I can't say that I understand every one of my biases and what I may or may not have done because I didn't understand all of them. So being a bit more um specific about how you're going to look uh through that health equity lens. I think is an important addition to what you'll see us doing in the future.
Yes, thank you for bringing that up because that's a, I think that's sort of one of the key areas is that we need to understand what causes racial disparities in health and health inequities. As a board, we can throw money at the problem. That's the sort of the outcome of it, but how do we really address those, those core root problems that are leading to the health inequity? So we need to understand what they are. So half of our board study session last month was really looking at that and trying to understand it. We just began unpacking it. Um we have a really great program um in our school work um that works with teachers and other admin um on implicit bias to try to it um it teach them how to understand and how to, how to recognize their own implicit biases and what they bring in their teaching. And in, or or whatever role they have in the school. It's been a, it's been a really important and really effective program that we'd love to see maybe brought into the community and maybe work with nonprofits on and and so forth, um bringing that into our board. So we're working on it. The short answer at the end, we have a lot to learn in that area as well.
But, but I think it's also important to say, we need to hear specifically from the community. What in particular that are we missing? That maybe you can help us with um in terms of disparity in healthcare.
And Pamela, I, I actually just want to add real quick. Um first of all, I appreciate everybody's comments so far, and I think it's so important that we speak about these things out loud. Um i- i- I think, Aaron, you said a key word earlier and just say, I, I have to say this and I have to say it out loud. And we have to kind of not be afraid, even though sometimes it's tough to talk about these things. Um but I, I really would like to see um our board learn as a community, not, not just, you know, in our own trainings. Because I know Pamela, we, we have our own discussions all the time and we have to gather our team. But I think transparency is what's going to uh uh build trust overall throughout the community. And the more that, I think, um uh Arthur shared a point as well, said, s- starting here, starting these these conversations as a community. Um and I think it's so important for us to even be in these trainings or have these conversations directly with our residents. Um that's, that's really something I would love to see is, is these town halls on a more regular basis, having these one-on-one conversations with our residents.
Thank you, Ivan. You know, I am going to, we have just a few minutes left and I'd love to, with your permission, finish with a question that I like to ask at the very end. And it's borrowed from our friend Becky Beacom, who's the Community Engagement Director at Palo Alto Medical Foundation. And each of you, just a couple of seconds. And the question is, what gives you hope for the future, especially now during COVID-19? What gives you hope for the future? Anybody?
Well, I'll start. The first thought that comes to mind is looking at the people in front of me, you know, the pictures of people in front of me. Most of whom uh have spoken and spoken well and clearly are interested in helping this community. Uh again, regardless of race, creed, et cetera, et cetera, and so forth. These are people who are giving up their time, such as tonight, for the benefit of our community. And I think what gives me hope is that I see a whole bunch of names on here that I, no idea who they are. But they're interested enough to be here and learn from us. And hopefully, over the course of the years, we'll be able to work with us and help us along our track.
Thank you. Beautifully said. Anybody else?
I second that. I would be, that, that's how I, I would say is, is I have hope that this uh, this group here um through the work that we do and our community are, we have a really spectacular county. Um I, regardless of all of the concerns that we've laid out here, there's so much. Um there's so many people coming together. We have such smart people that are in health leadership roles that are really compassionate and passionate people about solving this. So I think I'm hopeful. Um we can't maybe change the, you know, the, the, what's happening around the world or in even the state. But we, we can do something within our community and we are doing something. We can do more, but I feel really hopeful and I do, that, that gives me hope that we, we've got each other.
I'd like to have one more comment. And that is, did you notice that politics didn't enter any of this at all tonight? And that's refreshing.
And I want to add that I'm very confident that we're all going to end up stronger and more resilient than ever.
Can I add one thing about politics? All you people are now, are now elected in districts, right?
Yes.
You have your own district. You know what your district consists of?
Yes.
Mighty strange things happening in various elections around the county. So if you're planning to leave, you're going to have to find somebody to, to represent you in the district. And who knows how that's all going to work out? Mr. Farrell's got to find some other person out in, out on the shores. Maybe he's done it already. But uh just stay tuned to it because watch what's going on.
Why are you assuming, Brent, that I'm not going to be here forever?
Well, I give you another hundred years, Art.
Okay, Ivan, Aaron, hope for the future.
Sure, uh I'd say um there's definitely uh, there's a lot of people in my life, actually, that give me hope. And those are the people that are not afraid to dream big, that are not to be afraid to share some radical uh ideas and spark conversations with the people that they don't know, spark conversations with the people that they don't agree with. Um that are here and, and willing to come to the table and um and, and seriously just put their best foot forward and say, hey, we're, we're doing this for, for the community and the next generation to come and everybody who needs help. Um I see a lot of familiar faces here. Um and uh so I, I'm definitely very hope, I feel very uh supported and I'm very hopeful uh with all the people that are, are currently around me. Whether it's in the, you know, our, our uh community advocacy setting or it's just at, at home. Um I love, I love big thinkers. I love lots of uh big energy. And so I feel like we can take it on. And I agree, Kim, I think we're gonna, we're gonna come out much stronger than ever from this. Uh you know, this pandemic is just really putting on uh the, the magnifying exactly that, what's been happening for so many, many, many years. And so if, 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 if anything, it's just allowing us to address these things one at a time. And so we're here to take it on.
Thank you, Ivan. I think it's young people like you that give us all hope. Aaron, I know you've got something.
Yeah, of course. Uh I guess, I, I think it's in similar veins to what we've been hearing. But uh what gives me hope is the energy I see in our community and our state and in our nation. Uh what gives me hope is the folks who are non-elected people, but who are out there leading. Are they leading in the streets, doing protests, rather than leading, uh doing distributing food at our food bank? Some people are, there are just so many people um throughout the course of the pandemic, throughout the course of, I don't know. I, I, we're all politicians at some level the last four ridiculous years of people who have stepped forward to try to lead us and push ideas and make people uncomfortable. Um they're not elected leaders, but they're the ones who give me the hope. Um and you know, I, I think that as an elected person, um I, sometimes we lead and other times we follow. And I feel like these days, I'm kind of following, I'm following the lead of our community and following the energy of the people in the streets, the people who are volunteering, I'm following the energy of my kids in the next room who are pushing me all the time in different directions. Um and that's what gives me hope.
Thank you. I leave anybody out before I give Pamela the last word?
Uh Jerry, did you get, tell us what gave you hope? Jerry?
No, I didn't uh make a specific comment. I know I have things that I hope, but I'm not sure about the other. I guess I would say that what gives me hope is that uh within our community that it seems to be that the community has responded in a charitable way to the many organizations that support the same organizations that we do. Uh in many ways, we, we are small potatoes compared to what's needed to solve all these problems. And I think that many people, not all, but many people have stepped up in this time and have increased their contributions to organizations like Samaritan House or Second Harvest Food Bank. Samaritan House or Second Harvest Food Bank or Meals on Wheels to make a real difference for the community. So that gives me hope.
Thank you, Jerry. Pamela, final words from you.
I just want to thank everyone again for joining us. You know, there's a lot more dialogue to be had. We're, as I'm going to reiterate it again, we're here. Our board is fabulous. You've got to meet them and hear from them. All have a very diverse perspective and energy, but the one thing that's in common is everybody really cares about this community. And we care about working with one another. And, and that we are, we're here and we're listening. And I do want to invite you to further town halls. I think our next one coming up is focused, actually, Dr. Nafak, I think is going to work with us on our next one in December. And so we'll let, that'll be on our website when we get all the details of that. But let's keep the dialogue going. And, and we're going to, we're going to keep moving to, to the goal that we're going to come out stronger and better as a result. We will.
I have a, I have a quick question that addressed to Charlene and Pamela. And that is, you might want to do some kind of test and see whether the time of the meeting is keeping some people away. Because, you know, people are having dinner, drinks, whatever. Most of us are, or at least some of us are retired. We can do what we want. But I think might be interesting to figure out for the next one, what would be the most appropriate time? Maybe this is the appropriate time, but I'd like to check on that.
Thank you. We think this time works pretty well for families. We've done some lunchtime meetings, but we're trying to get those who may have a daytime work schedule, but it's something to consider. Well, I know I'm speaking for everybody. When I say thank you, thank you to all of you who joined us today. Thank you to the Board of Sequoia Healthcare District. A special thank you to Pamela Kurtzman, CEO of Sequoia Healthcare District. Everybody stay safe. Happy Thanksgiving and thanks again for joining us tonight. Take care, everybody. See you soon.